You may vote. Everyone has voted and the motion carried eight to zero.
Moving to non-consent items, I'm looking to read.
Three, four, five.
Oh, one, five. Okay, so items three, four, and five together. Consideration, item three, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment, and/or postponement of R-2223-53. Premium Land LLC requests amendment of the Norman 2025 land use plan for low-density residential designation and office designation to mixed-use designation for approximately 79.88 acres of property generally located north of Indian Hills Road between 48th Avenue Northwest and 36th Avenue Northwest. Item number four, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment, and/or postponement of P-2223-16. Premium Land LLC requests rezoning from R1 Single Family Dwelling District and CO Suburban Office Commercial District to PUD planned unit development for approximately 79.88 acres of property generally located north of Indian Hills Road between 48th Avenue Northwest and 36th Avenue Northwest. And item number five, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment, and/or postponement of PP-2223-3. Consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Premium Land LLC, Crafton Toll, for Redlands Edition for approximately 79.88 acres of property generally located north of Indian Hills Road between 48th Avenue Northwest and 36th Avenue Northwest. I will take the staff presentation.
Colton Whiteman with the Planning Department. We have an application from Premium Land LLC for rezoning to PUD planned unit development for property located on the north side of Indian Hills Road between 48th Avenue Northwest and 36th Avenue Northwest. As part of this rezoning, applicant requests to amend the Norman 2025 land use plan from low-density residential and office designation to mixed-use designation. The property currently is designated as low-density residential and office. To the west is low-density residential and commercial. To the east, low-density residential and office. To the south, low-density residential, some commercial in there as well. And the proposed change is to mixed-use designation. As just stated, applicant requesting to rezone to PUD from R1 Single Family Dwelling District and CO Suburban Office Commercial District. The properties currently are R1 and CO. To the west, it's zone PUD and C2. To the east, R1 and CO. To the north is the City of Moore. To the south, it's zone R1 and PUD currently, and then that A2 tract as well. This is an aerial of the site currently. It's vacant right now. To the west, it's also vacant. To the east, vacant. To the south is a church and some single-family, as well as some vacant parcels. And then to the north, in the City of Moore, are single-family homes. This is looking north on Indian Hills Road at the subject tract. This is south, at the church and the surrounding single-family, as well as that vacant property. This is looking eastbound on Indian Hills Road at the vacant property. And this is westbound on Indian Hills Road. This is the proposed preliminary site development plan. The applicant proposes, as part of track one, commercial uses that are generally based off the C2 general commercial district. As part of track two, applicant's proposing apartment complexes that are, that have uses generally based off of the R3 multifamily dwelling district. Track three is proposed as duplexes that are generally based off the R2 two-family dwelling district uses. And then track four is single-family lots that are based off the R1 zoning district uses. This is the open space plan that's proposed. That's approximately 21% of the site. And then notably, in the northeast portion of the property, which is the bottom right on this map, there's some parkland dedication that satisfies the gateway parking trail that was proposed in 2010. This is the phasing plan that was proposed. Applicant proposes phase one, which is the single-family lots. Phase two would be the duplexes. Phase three would be the apartment complex. And then phase four would be the commercial. This is the proposed preliminary plat. And then this is the preliminary plat with the concept site plan, or conceptual site plan on there as well. Applicant requests rezoning to PUD to allow for a mixed-use development with commercial and residential uses. Staff forwards this rezoning request as ordinance number O2223-16 for consideration by the Planning Commission. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commission of Staff?
One, the parkland requirement is, does the dedicated, proposed dedication, does it exceed or just meet the parkland requirement, or is it?
I believe that it meets and does not necessarily exceed.
What is the area?
So if you look at your agenda packet, at the very, attached at the end of the staff report is the gateway parking trail. And that, basically that western portion of that concept is what is being satisfied here.
Can I just add one thing? So in the actual PUD document, it calls out that the applicant is dedicating 2.66 acres of parkland in the northeast corner of the property. And that is allowing for the connection to the adjacent parkland to the east.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Seeing that, I move to the applicant presentation.
Thank you and good evening, Commissioners. Gunnar Joyce, attorney with Reeger Law Group. Also have quite the team here tonight. We have Zach Holland with the applicant, Premium Land. Kendall Dillon is with Crafton Toll, the engineer. BJ Hawkins is here with TEC Traffic Consultant. And Sean Reeger and Libby Smith rounding out the team. Walk you through a quick presentation here that'll touch on most of what Colton had told you and add a little more. So here's an aerial of the existing surrounding community. And as Colton noted, this black dash line, if you can see it, running north here along our border is the edge of Norman city limits. And so as you can see, more to the north here, it's pretty developed out with Talavera has quite a few single-family homes in here. There's a sub-street right here just to the north with likely more coming in this neighborhood too. And so a lot of single-family residential in the area with zoning and 2025 with the Norman tracks that can have foreseeable development in the area as well. So let's zoom in here. We are just north of Indian Hills Road. Here's 48th Avenue and 36th, our site here, just shy of 80 acres. An existing 2025, as you can see in the surrounding area, this is the uplands preliminary plat area, which also proposes multiple uses. This land down here is 2025 mixed-use as well, like we're proposing. And this site over here to the south is called the J&amp;J property that's mentioned in the traffic staff report. And it's a proposal, it goes down quite a ways as a PUD that has commercial, multifamily, and single-family residential. And that essentially is what we're proposing here, similar to some of those surrounding properties. Currently, low-density residential, which is R1 essentially all the way up to Indian Hills Road, and then office just to the west here. We're proposing again, mixed-use. Existing zoning, same thing, R1 and office. And as you can see, quite a few PUDs. So uplands here is not PUD, just, it actually is street zoning with multifamily. This is an existing church. This is commercial. And then some office over here, PUD with commercial. This is J&amp;J, which is multiple uses, commercial, multifamily, single-family. And again, that's what we will be proposing as well, PUD with mixed-use. Here's the site plan. As we kind of go forward, you already saw the phasing plan, but we'll touch on it briefly. Track one here, to orient us north is the right side of the screen, so we have flipped here, north being over here. Track one, commercial, right up against Indian Hills. And then we buffer back to protect against our single-family homes in the north tier. So we have, excuse me, a commercial buffer. Then we go to apartments, providing more buffer again as we start to get into individual lots. Track three is our duplex lots, and then track four, your typical R1 single-family, with again, the park all the way to the northeast corner. So here's another summary, the PUD, the tracks, and the acreages. And then also you can see, start to see some unit counts, some proposed unit counts. So one, commercial lot. Our track two apartments, again, is going to be one platted lot of about 19 acres. We're proposing approximately 400 units. It's drawn currently as 380 units laid out on the site. We add that buffer because there's some ordinances in Norman about size of units. And if you go, you know, if you go to a four or five-bedroom unit, that can be counted as multiple units. And so that, a little flexibility there for 400, which again, with that 400-unit count, we might not go that high, but that's how you get to the 2.6 required of parkland, which we're exceeding slightly with 2.66 proposed. As we go back to track three and the duplexes, we're proposing 28 lots, and track four, 88 lots. And so what's the theme, why are we here asking for this? The theme of our PUD is a master plan community that proposes, as you can see, diversity of residential opportunities. And we're proposing multifamily apartments. We're proposing duplexes. We're also proposing single-family, family traditional, R1. So diversity to the market that is not currently available in the immediate area. And then again, we're proposing compatible forward-looking uses with the impacts and the infrastructure that's coming to this immediate area. We'll talk about that in greater detail. But this is laid out to facilitate a productive and a usable and a workable development that can function with what's going to happen along Indian Hills Road. Preliminary plat, we've already talked about. It proposes the one platted lot for commercial, one platted lot for multifamily, and then the duplex lots with the single-family lots. Our open space plan proposes about 21% open space throughout the entire development. And then the parkland over here, 2.66 acres. Now, we've worked really hard with staff going through the process. In 2010, when this was originally planned out, there was a gateway parking trail master plan. And that, if you can see the red highlight around this area over here, that's our property here, that's Premium Land. And then as we go east, that is off-site. But so far, it's been consistently upheld as those developments to the east continue to be platted. And the theme here and the overall goal is connection as we go east towards 36th Avenue, and then even east of 36th Avenue, a usable park, trail, and plan. And we are keeping that same intent here. We've talked with James Briggs and the Parks Department. We also went to Greenbelt and showed them that same thing. So up in the northeast corner, just like it was proposed in 2010, we are here again, showing it in the same area. There's a comment from the staff report that went to Parks Board that notes this, that Parks has worked with the developer and then notably has kept the same connection to the other neighborhoods intact. And again, requirement for this development is 2.6 acres of parkland. We're proposing 2.66 acres in that same spot that was originally planned in this area in 2010. And then again, when we went to Greenbelt Commission, there's also a Greenways master plan that talked about walking trails throughout this 80 acres, both interior and then up north and south along the east and west portions of this property. And then we are keeping that as well with sidewalks along all the interior roads. And so this is a very walkable plan, not only interior, inside our own property, but also very walkable to surrounding properties. We've got connections to the west up here. We've got connections to the east here. And there's also connections, as you can see, all the way up to the north boundary into Moore. So this is a very walkable plan that can feature pedestrian access all the way up to the commercial sites. So, Access Oklahoma, I'm sure some of you guys are familiar with this concept as well in this release that came out. There's a planned east and west turnpike right along Indian Hills Road. And at this point, this is pretty much all we know. This is all the property owner has seen. It's just a overlay of a conceptual plan. But as you can see, that is substantially going to impact Indian Hills Road. And so while right now it's vacant land, this is going to turn into a pretty heavily trafficked corridor, which we believe justifies not only commercial, but also the multifamily to buffer and protect the duplex and single-family residential. So again, this is what we believe to be the case, is that if the turnpike does come, it would just take this additional front part of track one, and we would still be usable and be able to accommodate development whether the turnpike comes through or not. And so this is a plan that we believe works currently under current conditions and also works future-looking, which is again, the purpose of our tier and buffer development. Here's the site plan in context, and then notably as well, as you can see, right along Indian Hills Road, we have our commercial, and then we buffer back to protect our single-family residential. But also, it's worth noting that not only future discussions are happening with turnpike, but there are city infrastructure projects along 36th Avenue, which turns this current intersection into a multiple-lane, six, seven-lane intersection on all sides. They just have completed the combination efforts on these property owners and are doing utility relocation work and right-of-way work right here in this intersection. This J&amp;J property, and then we talked about earlier, had a traffic study that also called for lighted nurse sections on 48th Avenue and 36th Avenue. So this area and this corridor has been a targeted area for public infrastructure dollars, both through the state and through the city. And so as we go forward here, look at the phasing plan, we've already talked about this as well, but we believe the phasing here allows us to continue development, to add residential opportunities into the community, while protecting and buffering against increased traffic along Indian Hills Road, with single-family being first, phase two being duplex, phase three being apartments, phase four being commercial. And then just a brief summary of the site. Our goals here are to provide a variety and diverse residential opportunities to the community, protect and buffer those more sensitive residential areas, allow the commercial uses in this property that are going to serve not only the additional residential opportunities that we're providing, but those residential opportunities in the surrounding area that are coming in the future, and also the more housing that is already developed and not around any commercial infrastructure in the immediate area. So we can get those sales tax dollars as those people drive right to those houses like Talavera just to the north outside of our city limits, but as they drive down to the commercial being planned here, it's tax dollars that stay in Norman or that are taken from Moore into Norman. And then finally, this is a forward-looking master plan that really takes advantage of not only private investment in the area from the applicant, the property owner, but the public investment in the infrastructure, both state and city. And with that, we're happy to take any questions. We also have not received any protest at this time, so we'll open it up for questions.
Gunnar, I had a question. So will you go back, it's probably several slides back, to the gateway parks and trails plan? Where, you pointed it out with your mouse, but would we point again where this subject tract is on this plan here?
Yeah, so most of the subject tract is not here. We hear this outlined in red. In 2010, that was the portion of this property that was a part of the gateway plan. And so this is kind of disorienting. But right now, when you look at it, you're looking north. This is east, this is west. And then when I click back to our site, right up here would be that dotted line. So it's the northeast corner of our property. At the time, back in 2010, this is a rough estimate on number, but I believe there's a 1.6 or 1.8 acre park that was proposed. We've increased obviously the unit count, and so we've grown to 2.66 acres. That's why the shape looks a little different. We obviously have a larger park proposed than what was proposed in 2010.
So I'm going to build off his question. On your, the little map there, it shows that that is a trailhead, but I'm not seeing, like, is that going to be accommodated in this as far as like additional parking for people to come in? Or is this strictly limited to residential access within here? You can just barely see it, but...
It is going to be publicly dedicated, so it'll be publicly accessible to all surrounding public. I'm not sure about parking. I don't know if we propose parking on that angle.
I did see some spaces there, though.
Could you return to the previous slide button?
Yeah, there's some spaces. Well, no, those are, those are large.
Just tacking on to that. So if someone were to come from outside the community to access the trail, they would have to park basically in track one and then use the sidewalk to access the park area? Is that what we're saying?
So Kendall, I might pull you up here. I think we are publicly dedicating and handing over that land, and so it's going to be city property. And so I think the final design of the park, interior park, will be on the city.
Okay.
So it'd be them to propose parking or amenities within the parkland.
Gunnar, can you go back to the other slide that has the...
Gateway. It looks like, this might be where you're going, it looks like there's maybe parking proposals in there.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we don't have anybody from Parks here tonight, but I just, and I wasn't super involved in this, and maybe Sean could even answer some of this as well. But it's my understanding that the area to the east, the area closer to I-35, and then right here around 36, was going to be a centralized area that people could access and go back and forth between the area that's on the east side of 36, and then walk the trail area that's over there on the north side. But I'm sorry, we don't have anybody from Parks, but I mean, I think that was the original plan.
And Jane, you're right, I forgot, at Parks Board, James Briggs talked about how even east of 36th Avenue, I think this is the main portion of the plan.
Right.
Where you likely would kind of come join the park area.
So I've got a question. I don't know if, you alluded to it with the turnpike coming through. What happens to Indian Hills Road through that? I don't know, BJ, have you looked at that? Or what's that typical look like?
Thank you. BJ Hawkins, Traffic Engineering Consultants, 6,000 Southwestern Avenue. Indian Hills will, you know, once again, assuming that it does go through, obviously with all the litigation and stuff, we don't know what's going to happen. But Indian Hills would become a frontage road. It would be the eastbound frontage road. Then there'd be a turnpike, and then a westbound frontage road constructed to the north of that. So that all stays in place, and it provides access to everything on the south. None of that loses anything, and so that's...
So it's going to be east and west back frontage roads on either side? Okay.
Similar, think about like John Patrick Turnpike.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Or I'm sorry, for the applicant? We do have an audience member who'd like to make a comment, would like to call up Adam Ross. And when you come up, if you will just state your name and your address for the record, and we'll allow three minutes for you to speak. If you'd like a warning about 30 seconds before that time's up, let me know. Otherwise, I'm going to give you the full time, and thank you for your comments.
All right, thank you. Adam Ross, 3301 Winchester Circle. I don't live in this area. I'm just a nerd for city planning. I care about my happiness. My wife made sure that I knew how real it was before I came here to speak about this. But yeah, there are plenty of studies, including one by the Institute for Local Self-Alliance, that huge box stores with an excess area devoted to parking have a net negative impact on a city's finances, once you factor in all the liabilities that a city will be paying for every year and in the years to come. On the contrary, slightly higher density areas like Norman's Main Street, for example, pay for themselves. They are also places that support local business and keep the money in Norman. With this in mind, my personal preference is that nothing be built here at all, and we focus more on indoor development instead. However, I know that Norman's 2025 plan, if something must go here, and we aren't willing to make it higher density. And here are three changes I think would be the most beneficial for the city, the nearby residents, and the developer. Number one, don't count off all the residences from the commercial area, or the different housing types with fences and walls. Instead, cut the giant building in half and put in a walking trail down the center of the entire development to connect everything. It's called a community for a reason, but everything is really covered. This is good for the developer because a trail provides an overall better quality of life for the people living there, making more people actually want to live there by choice and not because they have no other options. It also reduces traffic in the area by getting cars off the road, increasing the walkability of the place. Number two, add more trees along Indian Hills, the parking lots, and all the streets. Having a barren sea of asphalt is just not a good look for a city. A nicer-looking area will make more people want to shop there and will hopefully win favor with the nearby residents since it helps to shield their homes from all the hustle. And number three, I think most importantly, Norman essentially ended its parking minimums last year. If for some reason you are convinced that this amount of parking is necessary for this development, I would encourage you to take a look around Norman on Google Maps and try to find me a big box store parking lot that is full. I understand this is right off the interstate, it's a high-traffic area, but so is the northwest 24th Avenue shopping area, a place I frequent. And those beloved giant parking lots with Crest and Target are never, ever full, not at rush hour, not even on Black Friday. Oversized parking lots are a waste of space and a horrible loss opportunity for revenue for the city. We need to stop building more parking than there is actual building. We have built every American city like this, and yet somehow we haven't. So I would leave you with this. What would be the actual income per acre of this place for the city of Norman, after all the city services and maintenance are accounted for? Will its development produce enough tax revenue to pay for its own maintenance every 15 to 20 years? Or will it end up having to be subsidized by more financially productive areas in Norman? Note that there are simple proven methods to improve places like these.
Thank you.
And ensure that they actually produce revenue for the city.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. Before we move into any planning discussion, is there any additional questions that any commission have for staff or for the applicant?
I have a question for the applicant. You know, I'm shocked I didn't think of it until the gentleman's comments. Why aren't there planned trees throughout the development? I mean, the open space is really great. I like it a lot, and the parkland and how it connects is wonderful, but it is a glaring hole. Why isn't it lined with trees?
It's a very good comment, and one that I wrote down, and I just forgot to mention, we have not requested any variance from the landscaping requirements, which is on all of the parking lots that we propose. So we will meet or exceed, when it comes to final development, the requirement to put in trees and landscaping along all those parking lots and in additional areas. So that is addressed in the PUD, it's a separate section. I apologize, I didn't address it tonight, but we will comply with all landscaping ordinances.
I was curious about the square footage to parking ratios. Is that, is this a, is this typical for, or I guess comparable to a typical big-box development, or was parking reduced in this scenario at all?
Kendall, you want to take that?
For the record, Kendall Dillon, Crafton Toll, 304 Parkway Boulevard, Ducon. And to answer your question, yes, on this point, you know, obviously it's a preliminary concept and with the PUD, but the ratios that you see right now are what we would expect with that type of retail. And we kind of used your previous code. It's my understanding, I think now you've kind of reduced that some. But the parking that you see would comply with your previous code. And again, it's pretty close to what you would typically see in these box stores would want to see, or that type... want to see or that type of retail. But obviously, as we come back with end users and we come back with final plat, then I certainly, we don't want to overpark it. But at the same sense, we want to make sure that we've got adequate parking to, you know, to support the retail businesses. So it's easier and it's better for us to come in with this to make certain that that amount of parking more than covers it and then reduce it when we come back with the actual final plat and construction plans that we know what those end users are. So I don't think the parking, it certainly, there won't be any more than that. Most likely, it'll be a reduction because, you know, obviously it saves us money, it's better for the city, it's better for someone, it's better for all considerations. So on the final design, we'll certainly make sure that we're not overparking it.
Any other questions for the applicant or staff?
I have another question. Has there been any consideration of additional connections within the neighborhood? Or is the, I mean, thinking with the plan, the primary connection is along sidewalks along the streets? And specifically pedestrian and biking connections? And this relates to a connection ultimately to the parkland dedication with the trail in between. Because I am in agreement with comments about increasing those connections as much as we possibly can, especially with higher densities there.
So what we've done kind of throughout the design process is we try to follow the city's Greenway master plan, which called out just the connections along the east and west, running north and south. So we basically mirrored the adopted plan there. Again, I think when we kind of get into final development and end user within the final plat and final site plan, you might see more connection and walking trails within the apartments as kind of an amenity for those tenants. I think just at this time, being kind of the preliminary design stage, we really have just followed the Greenway master plan.
I've just got a question about the shape of this dedicated park space and this piece which appears to follow behind some of the houses. Can you describe, I guess I'm trying to envision what that, what the purpose is of that piece that's just only following a small portion behind some of the single-family houses and why it maybe doesn't find a way to connect through to the next track to it, whether there's a park there or not? It kind of eliminates further opportunity for the neighbor.
So this kind of goes to, back in 2010, had a similar proposal where the public dedicated parkland was going to butt against a HOA-maintained kind of wet detention pond. And so we're doing that again here and we were proposing private common area, and I believe, let me go back here, you can see it again. So it's private HOA common area up until this point and then it becomes public as essentially could be a walking trail along to utilize, go back to here, you know, this walking pond. I know that this is something that Ideal Homes does a lot of where they walk around. It's essentially detention deserved facility, but they turned it into an amenity. And again, here, we could do the same thing with the public park going to connect to eventually all the way up into the sidewalks along the interior road. So I think we're just, again, proposing more connectivity. There's also potential for, you know, these backyards to overlook the detention pond, but you don't want to put it all the way right up next to it because you're going to be able to get in there and maintain the sites of the pond and take care of it.
And what about connecting to the track, which would be to the, what, west? Thank you. As far as connecting some of that park greenway to the west and that, why, I guess we didn't maybe look at orienting some of these house units a little differently for that opportunity?
It probably just wasn't a part of the 2010 plan that we came through. Saw on the initial plan, it just stops right here. We are connected to the west. I do understand your point that not along the north, it's not continuous green space up here, but we have worked to keep those connections throughout both the east and the west, which is, just like you're talking about, that's part of what was originally planned in the Greenways master plan. It's just this seamless, walkable connection throughout all the sites and we have kept those. We think it's just a location that, you know, you kind of balance out and allows us to include additional residential lots while keeping the connection.
And one other question I have. Have you looked at how much of the open space would be lost if there was an eminent domain situation with the turnpike and what that would do to affect the site?
Yeah.
Like a percentage of how much you would lose or quantity?
So not to detailed numbers yet because it's still a little speculative as to the final line when they come through, but we have addressed open space requirements in the PUD pretty extensively. And so we are complying with the requirement that 10% of the site of the entire development has to be open space. So no variance off from that. And then interior, inside of each track, there's also proposed open space requirements and impervious requirements. So for example, the track four, R1 portion, all those lots have to be developed out at the R1, 65% impervious cap. And then same thing with track three and track two, I believe we propose an impervious cap of, that mirrors multifamily. I think it's 65% as well. And then we currently are proposing 21% open space, but we have noted that that may be reduced just solely if we lose land mass as far as the 21% number. But we haven't saw any variances from the PUD open space requirement, from impervious requirements on the base sonings, and also the detention drainage requirements. And so if it is impacted and we have to change the design, we'll still have to have adequate drainage, adequate open space, and still be captive to this impervious.
Coming up with questions? Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Seeing none, I would move to planning commission discussion. Thank you. And you can tell your wife, thank you for coming to speak to us. We actually do appreciate public comments.
Yes, thank you.
I'll add a few comments. I like the amount of open space. Just eyeballing it, it looks like about five acres would be lost in terms of open space if they, you know, where they had that overlay, which is quite a bit. To one of the comments made, I agree that it sounds like a missed opportunity to not connect the green space over to the lot to the west. And it's hard to imagine why you'd want to cut yourself off in the long term like that. It'd be a minor change, it seems, to have that connectivity. So I agree with the comment, or at least the suggestion from the comment, that, you know, connecting to the lot to the west would be very nice.
Any other discussion?
I know there was comments about in final planning, final design, to reduce parking and increase connectivity internal to the development. But I would recommend we include that as part of our formal recommendation in addition to the connectivity to the west as part of our motion, if others are in agreement. Because I do think that it's also a missed opportunity to have, speaking to the connectivity, have this level of density without a connection to the park outside of just sidewalks external to these residences. In addition, going back to the parking, I know the initial design is based off of previous code. I entirely agree with the public comments made regarding the UNP area being overparked and that was a big part of the discussion in eliminating parking requirements. That, and as I understand it, many big box retailers, they would prefer not to have that parking. And so I was glad to hear those comments that, that by, you know, in looking at the market and what the market demands, that there's potential for reduction in parking, but I would, I would recommend we include that as part of our formal recommendation.
So does he make a motion?
This is discussion at this point.
Okay.
I just had another thought because I think the whole thing we're talking about is trying to get that connected to the property to the west as far as the green space is what keeps coming up. And I don't know why we couldn't modify the area around the drainage easement and just make that common lot. Because it's not like those owners of lots 14 and 15 could build there. It would seem that you could just go ahead and contain, connect it as another common lot across there to continue that green space across to the next property.
So can I, do we know who owns the property to the west? And I think it's a PUD. And if there's no, if there's no recommendation or inside the PUD for them to have that green space, how would that benefit this landowner? I mean, they can't control the property to the west and if there's no, there's no dedicated space, I mean, we're asking them then to potentially reduce a lot that may not have the ability to go to the green space, so.
Right. Do we know anything about the development to the west and what they're planning there?
The staff does show us who has the owners to the west and that is part of the radius reports for these. And so that might be a question for our staff to be able to answer that. If you have that maybe on an earlier slide that you could share for us?
So we're familiar with the owners to the west, not involved or affiliated by any means, and we wouldn't have any control over their development. However, we are understanding of the comment and willing to talk about and look at a design with the connection of the open space all the way to the north into the west property. And so we're going to make that recommendation something that the applicant is openly, open to consider.
And I appreciate Commissioner Daniels' comment on there, too. I think if I were to speak for my consideration of why I brought that up, maybe not for other commissioners, but just looking at, you don't always know what even that property owner may do in the future. And it's a potential missed opportunity for something in the future that that property owner could benefit from a connection to this park and this further greenway also. And we are getting very close with this design that it does, of course, all of this takes time and money to have to adjust a plat. So it's a lot easier for us to say, we'd like to see this and this. But this, every single suggestion that we make where we ask for a change does cost actual dollars and time for these applicants. It's good to remember that. But it does look like there's some opportunity maybe to do something with these lots since you've got an open space, a common area in there that maybe could be considered. So if we're already very close, I think that might be something to consider.
Sorry for bringing this up late in the game. I apologize. Kendall does actually have a copy of a previous proposal plat to the west and it shows that residential lots did line the whole northwest portion of our site. And so there was no planned connection at the time. I think that's why back in 2010, the connection to the west was in the interior because it meshed up with all three sites when they got together. And that's what we've continued to operate under because if that property owner just repeated their previous plat, there would be back-to-back backyard lots all the way up there to the northwest corner, for what it's worth.
I have just one more, just throw it out. You know, we would probably be okay, you know, if they lose a lot, go into the west, the calculated area that they have for open space, they could add a lot down and, you know, just right off that knuckle on the northeast side of what they're classifying it now. So, I mean, it would just be a, can I say what I'm saying? Okay. Just a swap.
They say lose one, pick one up.
Yeah, lose one, pick one up, but the area stays the same.
I would be in favor of not having something that would cause the developer to reduce a lot from this plan, but maybe change the plan to still allow for both. I think that I agree with that, too.
And I just want to clarify, if that's a recommendation going forward, we're definitely open to it if you want to tie that to the vote.
Jane has just given me a reminder that Parks Board has made a recommendation based on this current plat. So they may have to return to Parks Board to make a change for anything that would be a publicly dedicated park, at least. However, common area could be treated differently from PUD dedicated as well, so. And I would like to see less parking and higher use and more money for this developer as well out of this project, too. So. Okay. Any other discussion?
Mentioned earlier that we're going to tie something to the approval. Are we tying it as a recommendation or requirement?
I think that would depend on how the motion is made. It's a good point of order. If we would recommend for approval with a modification or a, just with a consideration for them to consider before it went to. I think that we just need to be a little careful with the wording of that motion, especially when it's not a standard motion. Just make sure we use our words correctly and jump in there and get it the way that we intend. If there's any other discussion for how somebody might want to phrase that motion, let's have that discussion now.
I don't know how to make that wording precise if what we're after is more connectivity. I mean, you can make precise that you want to move one lot, you know, in the northeast or sorry, in the northwest and swap it out with a section in the northeast. That's precise. But trying to improve connectivity throughout, which is good, and I think most of us are for that, I don't know how to make that language precise.
And if I could make a suggestion, that might fall into a recommendation versus requirement. So that the recommendation that they consider that. Rebecca's jumping in. That's helpful.
So I have pulled up the PUD ordinance located in chapter 22, section 420. And it says that the commission's options are to approve, recommend approval conditioned upon specified modifications, so that modification language is correct, or recommend disapproval. And just a reminder, I mean, your action's recommendatory. So as specific or as general as you wish it to be is fine. What's important is that you get it clear in the record.
Hopefully that helps us, too. That's good information. Thank you, Ben. I would take a motion.
Nervous.
You started.
I know, I did. I will make a motion to approve with the recommended conditions of a reduction in parking, exploring the connection, exploring a connection to the west of the property and exploring additional connectivity internal to the property.
I second.
Take a vote? And a vote?
You may vote. Everyone has voted and the motion carried nine to zero.
Thank you. Moving to our next agenda items, I've got three items I'm going to read together, item six, seven, and eight. Moving to item, oh, item six, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of R-2223-54, Subtext Acquisitions LLC. Request amendment of the Norman 2025 Land Use Plan for Commercial Designation to High Density Residential Designation for approximately 9.66 acres of property generally located on the west side of Plasen Boulevard, north of East Constitution Street. Item seven, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of O-2223-17, Subtext Acquisitions LLC. Request rezoning from C to General Commercial District to PUD Planned Unit Development for approximately 9.66 acres of property generally located on the west side of Plasen Boulevard, north of East Constitution Street. And item eight, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of PP-2223-4, consideration of the preliminary plat submitted by Subtext Acquisitions LLC, Kimble Horn for the Verve Norman for approximately 9.66 acres of property generally located on the west side of Plasen Boulevard, north of East Constitution Street. We understand the applicant has requested to postpone, so.
Yes.
To December 8. So if we'd like to take, unless there's any discussion, I would take a motion to, or motion.
Motion to postpone.
Second.
And a vote.
You may vote. Everyone has voted and the motion carried nine to zero.
Moving to Ms. Lani's discussion, does staff have any information for the commission? Commissioners, do you have any comments to make?
Can I make a comment? I was just talking to Kevin about the idea of including some recommendations in our motions moving forward. I think this is important in part because our minutes that go to council, they're not word-for-word minutes. And so oftentimes, council with everything else they have going on, they're not going to come back and watch our meetings unless there's something highly controversial going on. And so if we want to make recommendations that council's actually going to read, you know, there may be times where we want to require items, but recommending those items, that's something that they have a much better opportunity to see what we've actually discussed. So just a, just a thought moving forward, but also, also my thinking behind what we were discussing tonight.
I 100% agree.
And if I could add, I appreciate the commission slowing down so that we had the time to get some clarity of thought for how to word that correctly. We had a few moments to breathe. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other comments? Happy holidays. Thank you. Thank you, Jenny, for reminding me. Happy holidays. Thank you for coming out and making comment. I know you're the only one, but we always appreciate any public comment. And if there's nothing else to come before the commission, I'll declare the meeting adjourned.